Good evening and welcome to the annual organizational meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, April 1, April Fool's Day, but we're here for real. The first meeting of the month in April is defined in state law as the annual organizational meeting. That would be the occasion when we swear in new members of the board, although this was an off-election year and everyone continues. Also, reappoint people who are members of the various boards, commissions, and committees that are established by the Village of Pleasantville. And this will also be an occasion to swear in a new prosecutor, George Pappas, and to thank the outgoing members of some of these boards as well. So, because we don't have a formal swearing-in of any board members, I thought I would start with just a quick recap of some of the things that have gone on this year and some of the things we have in mind for the coming year. It's apparent to everybody that it's been a year with lots of challenges, maybe chief among them Hurricane Sandy, which affected all of us in various ways with more than half the village out of service power for more than ten days. So, we have been working pretty hard to try to shore up our emergency planning, although I think we did quite well on that occasion. There are always ways to do better, and one of the things that we have done is signed a contract with a company called Code Red. You may have heard us talk about them in the past, but it's going to provide a message system whereby we will be able to send out an automated message to your landline phone, to your cellphone, send you a text, or send you an email, any combination of the above and any combination of numbers you may want, so that when we have an emergency of some sort or another, you can receive information from us in the place and in the manner that you seek to do it. So, that will be getting going in the course of the year. We will have an opportunity for everybody to sign up. It'll be a simple web-based signup. The system also gives us the capability to, in essence, reverse 911, that is, to pull the database of phone numbers that we know about and call you, but it will be far more efficient if everybody signs up and aligns themselves with the system. So, amid that, we've had lots of discussions going on with Con Edison, lots of discussions with our police force and our DPW, as well as our loyal friends at the fire department and the ambulance corps about emergency planning, and have put in place a series of steps that will, I think, position us even better in the, hopefully unlikely event that we have a condition like we had with Sandy again. It's been a season of lots of change also within the village staff. Steve Johnson, our longstanding DPW superintendent, retired, and we welcome Jeff Akonam as the new DPW superintendent. Jeff's a professional engineer and has brought lots of skills and talent and energy to our DPW force. He has certainly had a trial by fire, having very quickly after his arrival confronted Hurricane Sandy, and then the winter season, and water main breaks and sewer breaks, so our DPW force has served us well in all of that. Our building department has been busy as well. As many of you are aware, the former MLA site now owned by the Henkel Company is now a vacant property. They have demolished the old MLA building and will be rebuilding a new distribution warehouse and headquarters office for the Henkel Knife Company, and we expect to be seeing new steel going up on that site in the next four to eight weeks. So, that's an exciting development, a long, long, long process trying to get that property to come back to life, and finally, it has done so. Mike Test in our building department has lots to do, not only supervising all of that, but we have lots of smaller commercial projects going on. In fact, Mike, about halfway through this fiscal year, commented to us that there were more open building permits in the Village of Pleasantville for commercial properties than at any time in his twenty-some-odd years here. So, exciting stuff going on. We, on this board, and Mike's department as well, will be heavily focused in the next some months over two very big proposals that have come our way. One of them is a proposal for seventy townhouse-style residential units on the former Baker property site. Those are the two low office buildings on the hillside on Washington Avenue on the right-hand side as you're headed north towards Chappaqua. Those buildings have been vacant for several years, and the current owner has been shopping that property to a potential buyer. Toll Brothers, the residential developer, has come forward, and they have filed a formal request for the zoning change that would permit them to pursue their project. So, that will require an extended process of review, and Toll and their team are in the process of putting together the materials that they will provide to us to help us review it, but that will be primarily a village board function while we review the zoning, but also a planning commission function to advise us on their opinion and should the zoning be approved, to review the zoning proposal. So, we are also in possession of a proposal from the Benchmark Senior Living Company, which is a senior assisted living company based in Wellesley, Massachusetts, for the northern wooded parcel, that's the other half of the Methodist Church property. That's up on Bedford Road in the old village, just off Maple Hill. That's a site that has been the subject of various discussions with various potential buyers over a long period of time. The Methodist Church has entered into a contingent contract with the Benchmark Senior Living Company, and they are in the process of going through the proposal to request a zoning change that would permit senior assisted living on that site. That will also be a long and extended process involving lots of different discussions, and there will be many opinions voiced along the way, but that project and also the Toll project have a series of benchmark dates, including lots of opportunity for public comment, both in public hearings and in work sessions, and those of you who are interested in either of those two sites will hear more about it soon. Over in our rec department, I say "over," used to be "over" right above us. A few months ago, they moved to the new rec center, which is in the former ambulance corps building on Marble Avenue. That was not everything we wish we could have in a rec center, but a whole lot more than we had before, so that was extremely happy news, and they have moved in there with great new energy and have plans for new programs that will be made possible with this additional space. It'll be a great resource for the community, and just a couple of weeks ago, we established the formal mechanism whereby it would also be available for rental, so if any of you are thinking of having a kid's birthday party or an anniversary party or something and need a little more space to do it, that's a new option for Village of Pleasantville residents. So, rec department has also been working, along with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, thinking about the improvements that may be necessary up at the Pleasantville pool, and that discussion will be ongoing as we take a look at that aging facility to think about ways that we might be able to update it. So, lots going on. As always, fields are in short supply and in heavy use. That will be true again this spring, as it always is, but thanks to our Parks and Rec Advisory Board and to Linda Belafato, the superintendent there, we are able to work out at least a workable arrangement, and we'll start to see the fields filled up with all kinds of sports in the next couple of weeks. Our finance department, in addition to the heavy lifting that goes on at this season as we do our new budget, is also engaged in a venture to become more electronic. We looked at and accepted a proposal for expanding our current system to incorporate a lot more electronic transactions, and that would be both the transactions that occur outside, where you, as a resident, for example, can pay your water bill or your tax bill online, but also the opportunity for us to get rid of a lot of the paper flow that currently goes on in village hall in our workflow and establish a more orderly and less time-consuming electronic workflow. So, that's going on in our building department as well, and is part of a mission that I think covers all of us in village hall. Come this month, April, the village board is also going to move to electronic packets so that instead of receiving and then recycling a big stack of paper every week, we'll be able to receive that stuff electronically. So, we are moving ahead on all of those fronts. Our police department has been extremely busy. I'm happy to report that Chief Love has been ministering to lots of new kinds of programs. Our lieutenant, Eric Rutzner, is back this week from the FBI Training Academy, which is a prestigious program and one that the chief went to a couple of years ago, so we will now have our two top administrators in the police department, both graduates of that prestigious program, which is extremely good news. We have had an ongoing and very active involvement with the school system, not only as part of our regular program, but also engaging the various issues and the concerns that arise in everybody's mind after the tragedy in Newtown, and I thank the school district for forging such a very strong relationship with our police department and with the village as a whole. So, lots of interesting stuff going on at the police department, some of which is regrettable news, but it's worth reminding everyone that in the last couple of weeks, we had a couple of bartenders arrested for serving underage drinkers, and we also had a fairly significant drug bust here in the Village of Pleasantville. It's a safe and good place, but safe, good places are all subject to the same trouble that exists everywhere in the world, and it's our goal, both as a board and certainly as a police force, to be on the lookout for people who are violating the law and to make clear that Pleasantville isn't the place to do it. So, I thank the police on that front, and I encourage everybody in the village, especially parents, to keep an eye on what's going on and try to keep everybody within the white Our senior programs are going through a significant change with the longstanding head of that program, Virginia Pancotti retiring. There was a retirement event for her last week, and she goes forth after an extraordinarily good run to a well-deserved retirement. Virginia's also a Pleasantville resident, and we look forward to finding out what she will get involved in next. But Joni Erlich has been hired, and she will be leading that program going forward, so that is a lot of change going on down at our bustling Clinton Street Center. Village Clerk's office continues to take care of all kinds of things, including lots of things that we don't even realize need to be taken care of, but do. Thank you for all of that, Judy, and she's also part of this process of moving us towards an electronic workflow as we start to take advantage of the technology that will hopefully make it easier for all of us to stay in touch with all of the information available and at the same time, make that more available to you as we post that stuff on the web. So, as you can see, we've had a pretty busy time here at village hall. Patty Dwyer leads the whole pack and does an extraordinarily good job of it. We're currently engaged in the budget process, which Patty leads. Our draft budget is on the village website at Pleasantville-ny.gov. Recognize that that is still a draft budget. We won't adopt it until towards the end of the month of April, as we continue to work through it and try to find ways to make changes and reconsider the philosophical underpinnings of the whole thing. So, if anybody is a budget wonk and would like to weigh in on that subject, you can download the budget at Pleasantville-ny.gov, and we would be pleased, indeed delighted, to have any kind of commentary on that, in addition to which, at our next regular meeting, which is the eighth, am I right, Patty? We'll have a more detailed presentation of the budget for each of our various funds and invite public comment, so that's coming up on April 8. That would be just a week from now. So, amid all of that, we have lots of plans for the future, lots of things we would like to see done. We're in the midst of a refit of our website, which Colleen has been working on, with the hope that we can have a more timely delivery of information and can make it more accessible and still stay within the relatively low budget that we have allotted to it. So, those are changes we look forward to over the coming months. We are fortunate to have now, especially in an off-and-election year, a board of veterans. I won't even say how many years veterans several of us now are, but all of us go into the next year with enthusiasm for what we confront as we begin what will be, as always, a challenging year, especially a challenging year in the context of the current budget and the current economy, but I can say with some enthusiasm that there has been an awful lot of interest in the last several weeks, indeed, last couple of months, focusing on the Village of Pleasantville. We've had a lot of general inquiries about possible development and some exciting potential opportunities that might come down the road, so I think that we are extremely well situated. We have weathered a bit of a storm, as many of our neighbors have as well, but we've come out of it, I think, in a rather healthy condition, maybe a little bit healthier than some of those against which we might compare ourselves, and so I think we are in a strong position, and we look forward to an extremely good year. Have I forgotten anything, Patty?
I think that's an ex-- I didn't know you were doing this this evening. That was an excellent recap.
It can't just be reading these boring resolutions.
Oh, we're not done with that?
We didn't start.
I thought I was going to be late and miss that.
You tried, I know you tried.
Yeah, apologize.
We can go to the resolutions, and I will read number 57, the mayoral appointments. That includes the appointment of our new prosecutor, George Pappas, who is here in the room, and George, when the moment arrives, if you could come up, and I will deliver the oath of office and swear you in as our new prosecutor. Before I do that, I want to comment that George takes over for our outgoing prosecutor, Dave Whalen. David Whalen became the prosecutor of the Village of Pleasantville in 1975, which is an extraordinarily long run. That makes Dave Whalen the longest-standing employee certainly that the village has had at this point in time. So, Dave was a part-time prosecutor for all these many years and yeoman service for the Village of Pleasantville, and we thank him with profound respect for his good service and also for his remarkable longevity, and we will be seeing to it that an appropriate recognition of that comes his way soon. So, with that, resolution number 57, which I'll read, resolve the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the following persons to the positions listed below for the terms in accordance with village law. Deputy Mayor Brian Skarstad through April 2014, deputy village clerk Patricia Dwyer through April 2014, village treasurer Mary Schwartz through April 2015, deputy village treasurer Pamela Hoffman through April 2014, acting village justice Virginia Collins through April 2014, prosecutor George Pappas through April 2014, and trustee, police pension fund Jonathan Cunningham to serve with the mayor and the chief of police through April 2014.
I think that's official. There's more people serving on that as trustee than there are people actually--
That's right. We have one remaining person, is that right? The spouse--
One widow.
She's well taken care of.
Right.
Yes, yes.
That is the remains of a pension fund that no longer exists. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. For the benefit of the village audience, this is a man you hope not to see, but if you see him, you'll be fairly treated. Welcome, George Pappas. We look forward to your services, prosecutor. If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, George Pappas.
Aye, George Pappas.
Do solemnly swear--
Do solemnly swear--
--that I will support the Constitution of the United States--
That I will support the Constitution of the United States--
--and the Constitution of the State of New York--
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
--and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of prosecutor--
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of prosecutor--
--for the Village of Pleasantville--
For the Village of Pleasantville.
--according to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Welcome, sir.
Yay.
Judy, have the oath of office booked, and you can sign in.
Nice to see you, George.
All right, number 58, Colleen.
Resolve that the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the following mayoral appointments. Trustee assignments: ambulance corps district trustee Barrett, bluechester farmer market trustee Barrett, parks and rec trustee Barrett, school board trustee Barrett. Architectural review board trustee Griffin Wagner, library board Colleen Griffin Wagner, zoning board Griffin Wagner. The business support council trustee Cunningham, planning commission trustee Cunningham, PCTV trustee Cunningham. Beautification committee trustee Skarstad, conservation advisory board trustee Skarstad, recycling committee trustee Skarstad, affordable housing committee trustee Skarstad, and Mayor Shearer. Chamber of Commerce Mayor Shearer, fire department Mayor Shearer, northern westchester energy action committee Mayor Shearer. Trustee department liaisons: parks and rec trustee Barrett, senior programs trustee Barrett, public works trustee Skarstad, building department trustee Griffin Wagner, finance department trustee Cunningham, police department Mayor Shearer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved that the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby appoints the following persons to various boards, commissions, and committees. The planning commission through April 2016, Steve Harrigan, David Keller, and Scott Blazdow. The architectural review board through April 2016, Jane Schwedfeger?
Yes.
Are you saying that correctly?
That's right.
The ethics board, John Nona for one-year term through April 2014, and Bernard Gordon a two-year term through April 2015. The parks and recreation advisory board, April 2016, Gary Cahill, Michael Gilfeather, Lori Shea, Geraldine Stapleton, and Armon DiAngelo. The conservation advisory council through April 2015, Tom Daniels, Libby Berk-- pardon me, Brendan Schultz, Douglas McDonald, Helen Muir, and Jennifer Frauley. The public safety committee through April 2014, Chief Richard Love, Fred Hettinger, Joseph Gallata, Christopher Setriel, and John Cullen. The village curator and historian through April 2014, Karsten Johnson. The beautification committee through 2014, Kathy Dinkle, Marion Coughlin, Franz Cabella, Elizabeth Ward, Gary Carrero-- Carriero? Sorry, the Italian I am, and I can't say it. Tanya Cunningham, Marlene Canopy, Merrilee Swatz, Amy Harder, and Colleen Peterson. And the Pleasantville Recycles Committee through April 2014, Dan Turner, Kim Turner, Ruth Fisher, Sharon Avrutic, Christine O'Grizlo, Helen Muir, Justine Collins, Jane Carr, Edwin Kewo, Linda Shankman-Curtis, and Andrea Garberini.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks again to all of those people who serve without any compensation whatsoever this village. Number 60.
Resolve that the stated meetings for the board of trustees shall be held at 8:00 PM on the second and fourth Mondays of each month, except in April, when the first regular meeting tonight, the org meeting, shall be the first Monday and shall convene at 7:00 PM. Work sessions shall commence at 7:00 PM on the second and fourth Mondays of each month from May through December, and every Monday at 7:00 PM for the months of January, February, March, and April. When such meetings' dates fall on a legal holiday, the meeting shall be held on the next succeeding day without further notice, unless amended by the board of trustees. All meetings of the board of trustees will be taken, will take place at the village hall, Eight Wheeler Avenue, second floor, unless otherwise noticed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, motion approved, 61, Brian.
Resolve that the board of trustees hereby sets the following procedure for calling a special, calling for a special meeting by the board of trustees. A special meeting can be called by either the mayor or at least two trustees acting together. The board of trustees will be contacted by either telephone, fax, or email. In the event a special meeting is to be called, all attempts will be made to contact the news media and public as soon as practicable after calling for the special meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, approved, 62.
Resolve that the Journal News is hereby designated as the official newspaper for the Village of Pleasantville.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, motion approved, 63.
Resolve that the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the following employees to be authorized signatories for drafts and transactions at all depositories. Peter Shearer, mayor, Mary Schwartz, treasurer, Pamela Hoffman, deputy treasurer, and Lorraine Pierce, bookkeeper.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, motion approved, 64, Jonathan.
Resolve that the Bank of New York, the JP Morgan Chase Bank, Wells Fargo Bank, TD Bank, and Hudson, excuse me, Hudson Valley Bank, Webster Bank, and Cooperative Liquid Asset Security Systems, otherwise designated as class, be the same and are hereby designated as depositories for all funds of the Village of Pleasantville, and that is hereby directed that all funds the Village of Pleasantville shall be deposited in said banks unless otherwise specifically authorized. And be it further resolved that no funds shall be paid by the treasurer of the village except pursuant to a judgment or order or an audit and allowance by the board of trustees as required by law in an order designating such funds, signed by the mayor or deputy mayor and countersigned by the treasurer or in his or her absence the deputy mayor, and be it--
Deputy--
Excuse me, deputy treasurer. Further resolved that all checks, drafts, or instruments for withdrawal of money of the village from said deposits shall be signed by the treasurer, and that compensation for services of employees, officers regularly employed by the day, week, month, or year be paid by the order to the treasurer for services actually rendered into or performed without specific order or audit of the board for the payment of principal and interest duly issued, unduly issued village bonds and certificates of indebtedness or tax notes provided, however, that no wages shall be paid, labors, except on a payroll certified as correct. Boy, this is one long run-on sentence.
Jonathan will be happy to read it again if anyone would like.
This--
I'm almost ready to go for the record on this. As stated in the record, certified as correct by the official of the village directly in
charge of the work in which the money is being expended, and provided further that if the rules of the civil service commission have been extended to apply to such employee or officer by the treasurer and the trustees, shall not audit any such bills, rendered for compensation for services, nor shall the mayor sign nor the treasurer countersign any orders for the payment of payroll for such employees or officers until such payroll has been submitted to the county civil service commission and certified that it was indeed payment or for or employment of said employees or officers in accordance with the civil service law. That is all one sentence.
Is there a second? Is there an editor in the house?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, motion approved, Brian, number 65.
Resolve that the board of trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to approve in-state conferences in accordance with general municipal law, section 77B, and further resolve that all out-of-state conferences be approved by the board of trustees.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, motion approved, 66, Colleen.
Resolve that the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby sets the standard business mileage rate for transportation expenses for village employees using their personal vehicle for village business as per the rate guidelines set forth by the Internal Revenue Service.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, motion approved, 67.
Resolve that the village treasurer is hereby authorized to implement the Village of Pleasantville investment policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
The Village of Pleasantville investment policy is about a--
As stated in the record--
--ten-page document.
Yeah. It covers scope, objectives, all of the policy in regards to our investment policy.
All in favor? Aye, motion approved, 68.
Whereas the board of trustees is determined to authorize payment in advance of audits of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges, and whereas all such claims shall be presented at the next regular meeting for audit, and whereas the claimant and officers incurring or approving the same shall be jointly or severely, severally liable for any amount disallowed by the board of trustees, now therefore be it resolved that the board of trustees authorizes payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges, and all such claims shall be presented at the next regular meeting for audit. The claimant and officer incurring or approving shall be jointly severely liable for any amounts disallowed by the board of trustees.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, motion approved, Brian.
Resolve that the board of trustees hereby adopts the purchasing policies filed in the office of village clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
The backup to that, as stated in the record, is a three-page document that describes our procurement policy, the requirements for what is and what is not subject to competitive bidding, and the requirements for quotes and the like. All in favor? Aye, motion approved, number 70.
Resolve that the board of trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby adopts the credit card policy as filed in the office of the village clerk.
Is there a second? Likewise, a two-page document that backs that up with general policy guidelines, treasury, deputy treasurer responsibilities, card holder responsibilities, and appropriate use of cards. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. It's a new year.
It's a new year. Congratulations.
We have a minor bit of business and a special meeting to pass a check register, but for the purposes of clarity, we will adjourn this meeting and then open a new meeting, so those of you who wish to continue with us, hang on, we're adjourning one meeting and starting another short meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the annual organizational meeting?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for your interest in the annual organizational meeting. We will now open a special session, a special meeting of the board of trustees from Monday, April 1, the purpose of which is to review and pass resolution number 71, the pre-check register. Our next regular meeting is a week from today, April 8, at 8:00 PM with a work session at 7:00, and that will include the presentation and public hearing on the village budget. Again, I remind you, the village budget, as well as lots of other stuff, is at Pleasantville-ny.gov. Whose turn was it?
Colleen.
I just read.
Oh, so it's me.
That's you. That's you.
Resolve that the pre-check register dated April 1st, 2013, covering check numbers 74932 through 7503, has been received, and they are hereby approved as follows, including the general fund, special purpose fund, water fund, refuge fund, pool fund, trust and agency fund, for a total of $342,137.3.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Patty, I see a whole lot more cable vision individual items. Is that because of the new rec center? I don't know, it just seemed like more line items than we've seen before.
Take a look. What page are you on?
It's on the third page. It's not, you know, it's not a big deal, but...
It's all internet. It's all of the lightness.
All these separate television, telephone lines. Maybe they just entered it with more detail than usual. The numbers seem...
Yeah, they're just broken out.
Yeah.
According to the fund they get charged, there's water fund, records fund.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. We have a motion to do an executive session on -- for legal advice. Sure. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We thank you all for watching. We have begun a new organizational year, although not a new fiscal year. That waits for June 1, but we get lots of new years in the system of the Village of Pleasantville. So thank you all for watching. See you next week on April 8th. Good night.